You guys are live.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Okay, finally decided to cooperate with me. Okay, we're out of executive session. I solicited a motion that we need to say we covered nothing but legal matters of the second session.
Would you like me to cover that, Mr. Chairman?
I would.
The best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting personnel, I'm sorry, legal advice lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such legal advices was identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened and heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting?
You want to poll everyone, or do you want me, or do you want me to?
Yeah, Sandra, if you could poll everyone, that'd be great.
Okay, Mr. Capel?
Aye. Do I say aye or yes? Aye.
Mr. Yancy?
Aye.
Ms. Zellmacher?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Aye.
Okay, we're back working on these conditions again. So, we had got all the way down to everyone, I believe. Is there any other commissioner wants to say anything, or do we want to, how we want to handle these conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we basically just leave things as they are and there might be other conditions that can get suggested between now and the next meeting. And we can just finalize or not, you know, continue this discussion at the April 1st meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with that, and given what Mrs. Thornton indicated on the general conditions that are already stated in there, I think that's accurate.
Okay.
I can turn that into a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we basically pause on the conditions for now. Accept additional input between now and the next meeting and continue the discussion at the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's remove the second that we basically pause for now, continue these till April 1st meeting and expects, or we could expect some changes between now and then and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. I heard three ayes. It carries, but I need two more people to vote.
You're muted, Mr. Yancy.
Aye.
Okay. Now I think I've heard all four ayes. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I have, I think, a procedural question and listening to the discussion, I'm thinking that maybe I perhaps aired when I prepared the memo for the package tonight and just simply sort of accepting legal counsel on your behalf. Would you like to have in a memo all of the conditions that were proposed by commissioners after the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes, that would help everybody and expose everybody to all the proposed ones. And also in the second one, I think it was well noted by all commissioners and that we wouldn't, we would remove that word student and put individual. We would correct what a bunch of other nouns.
So, I go ahead and incorporate that and then also just incorporate and include all the other conditions.
One and four, yes.
Do you want to see the Eric's analysis with that, or just have a list of the conditions that were proposed?
I'd like to see Eric's analysis.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Thornton. So, I apologize. Didn't, I don't know, I just assumed that everyone saw the analysis of Eric. Is that, because Mr. Yancy, you had said you had proposed a condition and I never saw your condition. And so I didn't even know that that was going on.
Well, that was why, Mr. Capel, I just asked the question about providing another memo that incorporated those. I took it upon myself to accept Mr. Lansing's analysis of all of the conditions.
I see.
For those that he indicated he didn't think were legally advisable, I didn't include those. And I apologize for that. So, I will present all of those to you all.
So, Mr. Chair, we probably.
Got it from me because if it wasn't legally sound, I didn't want us to hash over it. Based on what we're saying now and what we heard now. So, to give her some cover, we discussed it and how we would disseminate it kind of sort of, and that's what we came up with. That's why we want to give it to you now.
Yeah, and Chairman Brooks, may I just address something that Mr. Yancy had asked?
Sure.
So, Mr. Yancy, in the last meeting, I had said that I would send conditions in and I would, you know, run them through Mr. Hutchinson. And so what appeared to have come out of that were basically the conditions that, I think, basically that I submitted after Eric's legal review. And I never saw your condition, Mr. Yancy. So, just so you know where those originated and how that came to be, I just wanted to pass that on.
Jason, I hear the conditions you submitted were submitted before Eric's review.
Yes, that's correct. And then Eric gave some legal advice back and I just assumed that went to everyone. And so, so I'm just addressing Mr. Yancy, just so he knows where this thing showed up from. And I didn't even know you submitted any, Mr. Yancy.
Well, you know, we were given a deadline of one o'clock on Monday and I certainly tried to comply with that. And I don't have a problem with the rejection of it. I mean that sincerely. I've been rejected before on some things, so. It's, it's not a problem, Jason. I just, you know, from a standpoint that right now, I'm very skeptical of submitting proposals because, you know, it sounds to me.
Hang on, y'all, for a second. Hang on, I think I got a motion still on the floor, do I not?
Yeah, you do. Let's kill it off.
Right. Didn't we not take care of that? Let's take care of that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry.
But, Mr. Chairman, what motion still on the floor? I'm sorry.
Motion that we had, that you made to carry forward.
No, that passed. That went forward. I was just, yeah, I was just going back and I just wanted to clear it up with Mr. Yancy. Yeah.
All right, okay. So, George understands now where you got to that point. Okay, I'm caught back up. Let's move along though, because we got a couple of things to cover and that's been well discussed. Continuation of SUP 20-05, Redfish Solar Partners. We're gonna do the same thing, discuss the potential conditions, staff memo, pretty much again. We're looking at it and this is item number 5A. I didn't know whether we wanted to, I know we have this tonight and I know the schedule of it. And I just, just want to say we do have this work session. I know some of us have looked at the information on solar that we got from staff members. As we look at these conditions on 5A and what we have here. I'm gonna leave this a little bit different. I'm gonna leave it open to open discussion. Who wants to go first on these conditions on this SUP 20-05?
One question for Sandra. Has there been any change to the applicant's comments on the conditions since the last time?
No. No, I haven't had any further discussion with them since your last meeting.
So, those that were rejected still are rejected?
Yes. I mean, their comments from our initial discussion of them, yeah, those remain.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I just wonder if you might want to perhaps receive the presentation that is planned for tonight before you have this discussion. The timetable for your potential action on this special use permit has really changed since the, since your meeting on May, I'm sorry, March 4th. At that time, we expected action on, potential action on this special use permit application on April 1. But now because of the timeline for the public hearing on the substantial accord review, you would not be able to take action on this matter until April 15. So, there's a little bit more time available to you and I'm just perhaps suggesting that the presentation that's on your agenda for tonight might help inform your discussion of potential conditions.
Well, we are going to take the consideration that you just had, but what I wanted to do first to make sure that no commissioner had any questions on what had been proposed to move forward. Now, as we look at Redfish, is there anything you want to say different other than what Mr. Hutchinson asked?
Well, I think the one thing that I would just offer is that I had referenced in the memo dated February 26, the fact that I'm just trying to yeah, on page four of that memo, I did reference the presentation that the Board of Supervisors had received from Mr. Latchney on February 23rd. And there were, there was some discussion at that meeting about new legislation pertaining to solar facilities. During that, the board's discussion, there was interest expressed in potential revenues from signing agreements as well as cash proffers. Your staff at, tonight doesn't have additional information to provide for you on that, but I think that that is something that would deserve some consideration before you finalize any recommendations for conditions.
All right. The only question I have for you before we go too far, why do we have to do this by April of 15?
You don't have to. I mean, it was just that, that is, that's the earliest you could take potential action.
What I'm trying to do so the Commissioners can know before, this is a little sidebar here. I'm trying to leave the first meeting of the month for actions. I'm trying to leave the second meeting that we have for our work projects to get the conditions, get it together, move forward. I would, wouldn't be opposed to using the second meeting for actions. But I want to know as a general rule, our action meetings will be the first meeting of the month. And our second meeting is our work, just getting our work together, like we're working on these conditions. If we have to get more information, it just want to be our work session more so than I want it to be our action session. Even though it's our commission and we can move it that way, I'm just kind of trying to drive us in that format. And in speaking with Josh today, that organizational structure will probably work good for us as we go down the road. That we know our action agendas typically will be the first meeting. Our work agendas, not saying we can't, but that's how, that's why I was asking that question. Does the applicant onboard? Do they want to say anything, or I'm not for sure where we are with Redfish. They're not onboard?
No.
Based on everything that I see here, why don't we just defer this, here our work session, and then come back to this so we don't get the cart before the horse? It's kind of saying, why don't we say agree to these conditions moving forward before we get our work session? Does that make, are you with me on that, or am I feel by myself?
Sandra, reference to what you said, would we have by 1 April available those conditions dealing with what was on page four?
Well, no, I'm planning on going to the first meeting in May, Mr. Hutchinson, just to help you out with that. That's what I was hoping to go to for this one.
Newly adopted codes, which I think deal, some of them deal with revenues.
Right. And I think if we get to May, we would know a lot of that in place. And there's also some General Assembly things I'm told that may be coming out also. Those usually hit us by April 1, correct, Josh? Am I not correct on that? Or Eric, whoever? Nobody.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what, I'm sorry, what did you ask?
The General Assembly usually finish with their session by the end of April, is that correct? And all the new laws that are coming down the pack are certainly out there and available for Baco to kind of look through and tell us what we need to be paying attention to by May 1. Is that not correct?
Yeah, that sounds approximately right, but I'll defer on to Sandra and Josh on that. They may, they probably track the legislative sessions more closely than I do.
I just don't want us to do something that's not in the session. Josh, you, Sandra, follow me on that, any?
I don't know the actual calendar for the veto session, I mean, the veto period this year, that's really what's relevant. There'll be a period in April where the governor could veto.
But I believe there is some legislation that was adopted in the 2020 session that is pertinent to our discussion.
Yes, that's correct. Solar farms, yes.
Yeah, okay. And do we have those available to every commissioner?
No.
We can, we certainly can make it available.
Well, I think that would be necessary for us to make any action on a solar farm. Any more actions on solar farms until we get there. And if it has no bearing on what we're doing, you can just hit the hotspots. We don't, I don't, I don't think we want to re-law. But, you know, if it's something that's potential, let us know. And does everybody consent to letting the work session on solar facilities go take forth, go forth in front of working on these conditions?
So, Mr. Chairman, so what I'm hearing is that you're proposing or suggesting that we might just continue this until May 1? Is that basically what I'm hearing?
Right. And work on the conditions on the 15th, based on the solar facility considerations and the information we'll get from the staff on the 2020 legislation as it relates to solar farms.
I mean, on the 15th of April.
15th of April, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to continue this until our April 15th meeting. Is that what you're asking for?
Right.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Move the second we can see this, April 15th, many, for the conditions that we should have, you should have handled tonight. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Appears to be unanimous. Thank you so much. And you can tell the advocate that we moved that pretty much, Sandra, to the first meeting in May for action probably, but we'll work on the conditions in April.
Okay.
The work session is now on our agenda for solar facilities. Who wants to lead us into that? Josh, Sandra, who, Josh, Sandra?
Sure. Mr. Brooks, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and, or Chairman Brooks, I'll go ahead and introduce our speaker. So, yes, sir. Patrick Moni is the Executive Director of the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission. He has graciously put together some materials to give a regional perspective on solar facilities in in his area of operation, but also to touch on some of those localities and jurisdictions that touch Orange County. So, he'll make some reference to some of those. Mr. Moni has led the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission for a number of years and has a historical perspective that I think is very open to some questioning after his remarks. Mr. Moni works closely with Mr. Crozier, a member of the Regional Commission. And Mr. Crozier suggested that Mr. Moni would be a good resource for the Planning Commission. So, Mr. Chair, I introduce Mr. Moni.
Mr. Moni, go ahead.
And thank you, Josh, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. And as Josh mentioned, Mr. Crozier and also Mr. Voorhees serve on the Regional Commission and appreciate them connecting me with you all for this work session. I'm going to share my screen, assuming that that's allowable here. And I'm going to run through some slides here real quick for your consideration. Actually, I had jumped ahead. I've got, I do have some information on the 2020 General Assembly changes, which I'll get to as we, as we.
Good, thank you.
All right. So, overview of what I think Mr. Crozier and Josh in the conversations I had with them asked me to speak about. Just talk about recent and ongoing solar activity. Our, the Regional Commission, the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission serves Culpeper, Faukeer, Madison, Orange, and Rappahannock County. So, I'm going to focus on those, but I did do some, at least initial research and just kind of seeing what's going on in Spotsylvania and Luisa as well. So, I have a few comments on that. Again, General Assembly legislative actions from 2020. I would also note that the 2021 session, there's several bills that were passed by the General Assembly that the governor has an action deadline of March 31st for those, and many of them do deal with energy and solar. So, I know that county administrator has received at least a preliminary report, but I'm happy to share that from the Regional Legislative Liaison. I can send that to Josh for him to disseminate to you all if that would be beneficial as well.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll go through a comprehensive plan and ordinance, kind of, not so much requirements, but the way that those have been addressed by some of our counties in the region as they've dealt with utility scale solar applications coming in. Then go through some common just land use considerations. I did review at least the initial, I guess, February 4th information on the Redfish solar project. And I think a lot of what's in there will be similar to what you see here. I just think that the scale is somewhat different just because of the size of that project versus some of the other projects that have been applied for throughout the state and in the region. It's a GIS analysis that the Regional Commission did. It's two years old now, but I do think it would, if you haven't seen it, it would potentially bear some benefit just in terms of discussion of potentially where these projects are going to continue to emanate from in terms of the geography of the region. So, in terms of regional solar project activity, primarily the way that we've been able to track them are through local applications, either through Planning Commission discussions such as yours on the Redfish project, but also through Culpeper County primarily. Faukeer County has had a little bit of activity as well as some of the media coverage, particularly in Culpeper, that I'm sure many of you have seen, especially the most recent, which was the Maroon Solar Project, which is just across the Rapid Inn down in the southern part of Culpeper County. The other piece that provides the ability to track is the Department of Environmental Quality Permit by Rule Notice of Intent. And there's a link there for the Department of Environmental Quality's Renewable Energy Page. These are the Notice of Intent processes for projects that are 150 megawatts or less. And they are requested by DEQ as early as in the project development process is practicable. The applicant's request is submit a notice of intent to the department. This can be in, at the same time, run concurrently with local review by Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Sometimes you see a notice of intent before a local application is submitted. Sometimes you have local information submitted and that's the first time that DEQ hears about it, the notice of intent is sometimes later. What we have seen anecdotally, at least in, over the past recent months and through the past year, is that DEQ has been directed or is working to accelerate some of their review in terms of the notice of intent and the permit by rule process. Their process is really a checklist of materials and requirements that each application meets. Ultimately, the local review is the one that does bring down a lot more, you know, kind of oversight and some of that ability to to bring up different ideas and put some of those in place. Now, there's also a map that DEQ has for their notice of intent process. And so this was one that I just screenshotted from Tuesday. And what you see there, the green boxes are where they have a notice of intent submitted, which is, remains the notice of intent in the project, at least in DEQ's mind, remains active, but is not producing energy. The ones with a check mark, you see several in Luisa and then in Orange as well, where there's a solar permit that's been permitted by DEQ. It's gotten through the notice of intent and the permit by rule process at DEQ. But again, not, not producing energy at this point. I would note that this does, obviously doesn't include all of the projects that have come in. For example, there was a Dominion Power project in Faukeer County near Remington, which was a Dominion project, which did not have to go through this permit by rule process. Active project in Culpeper in terms of being applied for, that's not shown on this map as well as obviously the Spotsylvania project. Just to insight on, off of 621. So, a couple of other updates in terms of regional activity in terms of utility scale solar. The Greenwood Solar Project in Culpeper County, there was a conditional use permit, which is approved about a year, excuse me, about two and a half years ago, October of 2018. They actually just had a site plan introduction back in July of 2020 and that process is still ongoing. In conversations with Culpeper County staff, I think the site plan submission also gave them some, some new information just in terms of things that they might need to be looking out for as they go through the permitting process for future applications as well, just things they might not have considered until they got the site plan submission. Culpeper North Solar, that was one of the ones that showed up on that DEQ map. It was, remains active according to DEQ, but Board of Supervisors denied their first request. That was again back in November 2018. So, that's sort of on hold. And then the Maroon Solar Project, they had a Planning Commission public hearing in Culpeper County just last Wednesday. It's just under that 150 megawatt threshold, nearly 1,800 acres, panels on about 970 acres. So, it's a large project. It's the second submission for that in that general area down off of 522 in the Raccoon Ford area. Yeah, Planning Commission didn't take any action, but I think there's lots of questions that remain on that one in terms of the county's ability to push forward. In Luisa County, there's a lot of activity and I'll go back to that map real quick. You see a lot of, you know, notices of intent for the permit by rule process in Luisa. I would note that the four, excuse me, check marks there that have been through the permit by rule process are all school system projects. So, where they've got solar at their schools, so not the large scale, although certainly Luisa does have some, several projects moving through the process there. So, in looking at the General Assembly from 2020, highlighting three of the legislative changes. The first one is, I believe, what the Commission was speaking about just before this work session on special exceptions for solar photovoltaic projects. And that's the condition that allows the governing body to grant a condition that includes dedication of real property of substantial value or to accept cash payments for, or construction of substantial public improvements. And that doesn't have to be tied specifically to the conditional use permit so long as the proffered conditions relate to the project. So, I think that does grant a lot of flexibility. I certainly would leave that to legal counsel to make that final judgment, obviously. But I think that's, that's something that does grant the locality a lot of flexibility in terms of what they might be requesting or what might come through from the developer as part of the solar project. Second one there, 58.1-2636, the revenue share for solar and new projects, this is related and I'll come back to this later in the presentation, but you can, it authorizes localities by ordinance to assess a revenue. you can, it authorizes localities by ordinance to assess a revenue share of up to $1,400 per megawatt with certain exceptions and expands an existing tax exemption for such projects under certain conditions. Really where this comes into play is some of the, the concerns with the machine and machinery and tools tax and the, the lack of ability for locality to, to get all of the, the tax revenue from, from that tax based on some of the subsidies that were granted and some of the, just not being able to gather all of the revenue there. So this is a secondary option in terms of gaining revenue from, from solar energy projects. And then the, the last one was again, the, the local tax, the amount of exemption for, for solar energy equipment. And that changes the local property tax exemption for solar energy projects to a step down scale. I believe previously it was 80% for the life of the, the project was the exemption. What you have now is, is 80% to a step down to 70% and then 60% over a period of time. So there is a little bit of ability for the local government to recapture some of that tax revenue there for the equipment for a solar project.
So Patrick, you're saying those should be conditions?
Um, I, well, what I would say is on the, on the, the first one, it, it does come as a, the ability for the local government to grant a condition. Obviously, the second one for revenue share, it, it does authorize the locality by ordinance. So in some cases, it would require an ordinance change, but in some cases, it's conditions, especially on the first one in terms of the, the revenue that, that, or the profits that, that could come through from a project.
Thank you.
So comprehensive plan and ordinance considerations. And again, some of this is, is in the, the previous staff reports on, on the Redfish and other projects. But, you know, Virginia law does require that solar development proposals be reviewed with, to ensure compliance and conformity with the comprehensive plan. The 2020, there's a 2020 amendment that does allow localities to waive that review requirement. I, I'm not sure that any locality has taken advantage of that to date, but that, that, you know, opportunity was, was put in place. The other conditions, and this is something where we get into the, the response from local governments in Virginia, but also the region is the, whether it's a go through a rezoning or if it's by right in certain zoning districts based on, you know, again, ordinance changes or amendments to your ordinance. And then finally, I, I don't, you know, I don't want to speak for all of Virginia, but I think pretty much every locality, whether they make an ordinance amendment or whether they've adopted a, a solar, you know, utility scale solar kind of guidance policy such as Culpeper County, leaving the, the special or conditional use permit process in place. Everyone continues to do that, whether it's a, a by right or, or rezoning process as well. So looking at some of the, the local policy and ordinance development that's happened, you know, really this has been something that's happened over the last kind of three to four years, as you all are aware. I provided this, Josh and Sandra both have this presentation, but there are links in here. So if you have a copy of this, you should be able to click through to get all these documents that are referenced here. Culpeper County, as I mentioned, at least in, in the Rappahannock Rapid Inn region, has been the most active in terms of, you know, the, the solar development in terms of applications and, and projects coming in formally. I think every county has at least had some initial kind of, you know, inquiries and discussion about projects and certainly Orange is no different there. But Culpeper County's process was to develop a utility scale solar development policy. And so this is a guidance document that was first adopted in 2018 and then amended in 2019. Provides sort of a, again, guidance in terms of here's some of the, the things that they want to see as part of a, a utility scale solar application coming in. Deals with a lot of the, the land use and some of the other conditions that I'll talk about in a few minutes. They also just actually had a, a Planning Commission session and review of what they, what they termed a utility scale energy generation district zoning ordinance amendment. What the thinking there is that the amendments would codify some of the things and, and some updates to that solar, that utility scale solar development policy. But would also, you know, potentially by, if you, if they designated a district, you know, would sort of give, give sense of here's where we think this might be, you know, suitably located or might look favorable upon it. My, my understanding from at least the meeting last night is that it's, it's not likely that they will designate a district, but that they likely will move forward or it's still considering moving forward with that, that ordinance amendment and codifying some of those, some of those policy guidelines into their ordinance. And again, the conditional use permit still applies for, for projects coming into Culpeper County as, as they review those. Faukeer County, similarly, they, they actually did amend their zoning ordinance. There's a, for, with the standards and definitions for solar facilities and to allow utility scale solar facilities as a special use. I've linked their zoning ordinance there, Article five dash two zero zero one dot three. There are a few additional standards for utility scale solar projects. Again, these are largely the ones that, that show up in, in some of your staff reports and staff memos that I've, that I've reviewed here. I think, you know, we have a sense now of most of the major kind of land use issues and some of the major ordinance issues that, that are being dealt with. Madison County, a little bit stronger in terms of their, their approach to it. Again, a zoning ordinance amendment in August of 2019. And, and what Madison County did at that time was basically say that these types of projects would be allowable in their M1 zoning areas, still requiring a special use permit. Madison County does not have a lot of M1 zoned areas, so it severely limits where these, these types of projects might come in at this point in time. And then Spotsylvania County, they've, they got their code definition for solar energy facility. It's there, I'm not going to read it out for you, but, you know, again, kind of in accordance with, with code definitions and, and sort of kind of that, that different definition than utility scale solar, but I think meets the, the same kind of requirements there. Spotsylvania's special use permit again, in their, their A2, A3 and RU districts. And then in, in June 2020, they had a Planning Commission presentation, again, looking at, okay, what do we need to do in terms of bringing solar into our comprehensive plan and referencing these types of projects in our comprehensive plan? I, I think that's important just from a tying it back to that, that review for conformity with the comprehensive plan or compatibility with comprehensive plan. If you don't have anything in there, then it's a little bit broader and maybe a little bit, you know, easier for a developer to come in and say, well, your, your comprehensive plan says you are looking, you're favorable to, you know, alternative energy sources or renewable energy. And that, that, you know, doesn't give you as much defense if you were looking for a defense there. In this case, if you've got those specific references, then, then you might have a little more, you know, a little more to stand on in some of those, those conversations and comprehensive plan reviews. So some common land use and just other considerations. And again, these have come up in, in the discussions with, you know, others throughout the region and, and just elsewhere in Virginia. Various tools, obviously, that were previously discussed, but some of the, the biggest questions that have come up in other jurisdictions as they think about, you know, the, the, just the applications that come in, but also just in general, what utility scale solar and the impacts on, on the county itself. You know, one of the main questions is, is it appropriate to identify sort of the threshold for land available for solar projects? So is it, is it, can you say, you know, 5% of land area of the county or 10% or a certain acreage amount? So those are discussions that have happened everywhere, especially Culpeper and Spotsylvania. I think, you know, they've been a little bit hesitant. Culpeper has, you know, had that conversation and I can't remember the number they threw around, but I think eventually decided they're not going to, they did not put a cap on it just because they, they didn't want to, you know, make it seem like, well, we're asking for this much as well. So if you put a threshold on it, it's not just a minimum, but it also gives people a target to shoot for as well. Same thing, whether that threshold should be, you know, countywide or whether it should be to an individual project. One of the, one of the items in the Culpeper, sort of their, their draft pieces was talking about, you know, should, should the project be limited or should a panel, panel acreage be limited to a certain amount? And they were looking at 300 acres in terms of for an individual project. That's something that could be considered. There's other items that could be considered in terms of projects having a, a barrier in terms of, you know, sometimes miles between. If you have an approved solar development project, would it, would it make sense to say the, the, the next one needs to be a, a specific distance away in terms of a buffer around one, so you don't have them piling up next to each other, even if they're smaller projects initially? There's some discussion again about prioritizing the distance to existing utility infrastructure. Some of that is, and that's referring to, to high capacity transmission lines and substations, et cetera. Some of that, you know, honestly, in, in what we've seen practically is that some of that takes care of, takes care of itself just because of where the, the development applications are coming in. The, the need to be close to those, that utility infrastructure, such as transmission lines and existing substations is, is important for these projects, the economics of them. So, but that, that's still something that you might consider if you're going forward with a, a policy or an ordinance amendment for these types of projects. And then certainly the, the bonding requirements, you know, I, I know with the, the project in Orange that they're, you know, having a surety for decommissioning. And with that review every, you know, whether it's every three years and tying it to the, the CPI or whether it's every five years or whatever number. But I think that, that certainly is something that is, is a best practice in terms of that, that, you know, sort of discussion and putting some of those conditions in place. Culpeper County, County Policy, you know, their, their guidance policy actually includes bonding for, for all phases. And again, including, but I'm going to do erosion and sediment control, stormwater, construction performance, landscaping and decommissioning, rather than just the, the decommissioning or the end of life of the, the project itself. So then we look at, you know, project size, and I talked a little bit about this on the, on the previous slide, but you know, what is there, is there worth or is it worth discussing having a, in, in an ordinance or in a policy, you know, a, a cap on total project acreage or a cap on panel acreage within a project? You know, again, that's something that, that is being discussed in, in several jurisdictions and in trying to limit the size. But then there's also the, the other issues of, okay, well, maybe you end up with, I know in the Richmond area, I believe there was talk about, if you have a lot of smaller projects, but they just end up right next to each other, then is it, you know, even though they come in as, as individual projects, they potentially have, have similar impacts in terms of the, the total size. Site, you know, sort of application specific issues. And this is more when you get, you know, again, an, an individual project coming in for, for application or for site plan. But, you know, all the things that, that show up in the, the staff memo on the Redfish Project, the erosion and sediment control, the stormwater management, the site disturbance. You know, one of the, the bullet points there about grading limitations, I think, you know, limiting the grading to a certain amount of acreage at a time. So whether it's a phased approach to grading and not saying you can grade the entire site at once, but, but sort of asking for a, a phased process there. So it's the, the disturbance is a little less intense. The blasting and geotechnical reports, and I, I think this is perhaps important to Orange as well, but that's something that Culpeper County brought up when they got their site plan for the, the Greenwood Project was something they hadn't really considered. And what showed up in the, the site plan was a, a request or a, you know, the, the applicant saying, you know, we, we anticipate minimal uses, but we, we may need to do some blasting and they didn't really, you know, limit it to a certain area of the, the site or anything else. And so one of the things that, you know, the county staff is looking at is, you know, maybe saying, you know, either the blasting needs to be specifically identified where it goes or there needs to be a geotechnical report, or it should just be not allowed at all. The reason that comes up is just because of the soils that kind of run through the eastern part of Culpeper and certainly into Orange that, you know, are, are thin and, and, you know, have some, you know, may require some of that, or you may see some of those requests come in as, as applications move forward as well. That also leads into, to noise limitation and mitigation. Certainly there's, you know, I think that some of the, the noise impacts can be limited just based on, you know, limiting activities to certain times of day. But certainly blasting is something that, that would, would raise that, that issue as well. The water implications, that's, you know, for, for groundwater, I think that's a common concern and, and something that I, I think we've still seen questions and frankly, a lot of this stuff, because the, the projects are so new in Virginia, we're still figuring it out. But I think long-term, the water implications are not as much, but certainly during construction, there is some, you know, some concern there and just needing to be aware of that. When I go back to erosion and sediment and stormwater, we had a, the Commission has a land use and environment kind of work group that meets every, about every quarter. And they met actually earlier today. And one of the things they, they talked about was exactly this issue of erosion and sediment control, but also the, the stormwater management. And the, the issue there is that you've got erosion and sediment control, which is, you know, in, in Orange and, and most of our other counties, Culpeper Solar Water Conservation District does that review and provides that kind of oversight. But stormwater management is done at the, the DEQ at the, at the state level. And so there's a, been a back and forth discussion, I think, you know, throughout the state, but with DEQ about treating solar panels themselves as, as pervious or impervious. And so I think the, the local response has been, no, they should be impervious because they're, they're not allowing the same amount of to water to get through to the, to the ground. Whereas the DEQ has taken the tact of, no, they're, they're impervious. And because there's turf underneath or whatever underneath that the water will do the same. And so that impacts the amount of stormwater management, you know, BMPs or stormwater management, you know, practices that have to go in as the project develops. So again, just something to, to keep on your mind and consider as, as the process moves forward there in terms of the, kind of the way that, that things are defined and who's doing the, the review and, and things on, on some of those individual pieces there. Transportation and, and safety, and I know this is something that was included in, in, you know, the first project that came through Orange several years ago. But, you know, depending on the size of the project, you know, Redfish Solar is a, is a smaller project, obviously. But if you have a large project, it may be beneficial to, to have the developer do a traffic impact analysis to see what, you know, really what are we talking about in terms of the, not only the number of vehicles, but the, the size of those vehicles and, and the impacts, even if it's over the short term during the construction phase. And then obviously internal to the site, parking plan, and then the emergency response access and, and site safety plan, I think, are just things to, to certainly include and ask for as part of that, if they're not provided with the, the application. And then we get into some of the, the kind of resources and more of the local considerations beyond the site. And so talking about existing land use and adjacent uses. And I, I know you all are, are familiar with these sorts of discussions from any sort of development application that comes in. But, you know, the opportunity to ask for a view shed analysis may be, may be beneficial as depending on the size of the site or the, the resources that are nearby. Certainly proximity to agricultural and forestal districts is something that, that you might consider in addition to, you know, other easements or things that, that may be adjacent to the site. Historic and cultural resources, you know, the, the permit by rule process does address this to some degree. They, they tie in with, the DEQ works with Department of Historic Resources at the state and also Department of Conservation and Recreation, you know, to, to review some of that and they share that information. But again, the, the local review is the place where that, those sorts of discussions are really going to get specific and can really, you know, just bring some of the local knowledge that, that the Planning Commission and anyone else might have as part of that discussion, just based on the importance of, of those resources to, to the region here. Buffers, I know again, from the, the Redfish memo and the, the project there, that buffers was something that was discussed. And I think that's, that's exactly right. You've got not only the, the project boundary discussions based on, you know, whether it's proximity to a, a public roadway or to adjacent landowners. But, you know, potentially also internal buffers in terms of, you know, if you've got streams crossing or if you got riparian areas crossing a site, if it's going to be sort of a dispersed panel setup and on a site. So those are things to consider as well. And then as well, if those are forests that are vegetated and, and potentially the impact on, on the view sheds there. So certainly something that, that needs to be incorporated and, and should be reviewed as part of any project that comes in. Also just a, a link there for the, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Pollinator Smart Program, which is something that I think i- in some cases, I think we've seen some of the state agencies that, that have worked on, on, that have been involved in solar, looking at ways of, okay, well, what are some of the benefits that we can bring to this? And so I think certainly with, with native grasses or with, with native, you know, plants that, that go in with the solar project. That's one way to potentially decrease some of the, the negative aspects that, that have come in with some of the, the applications as well. So just a, a quick map here, and this just sort of shows some of the things I just talked about. And this was for the, the Culpeper County, the Maroon Solar Project. And it's just a, something that was included for, for their Planning Commission review. But this gives you a, a map of the project, which is the, the parcels there in yellow, sort of on the, the left third of the screen. Show where the, the application parcels are included and just sort of brings it in. This one brings it, brings in the existing transmission line, so you can see them running right through the, the middle of the project there. It's also got topography in terms of 50 foot contours and then the flood plain, prime farmland. And again, some of those areas of historic interest and then battlefield areas. I, I think this is something where the, the Culpeper County Policy does kind of outline some of these things specifically, you know, wanting to avoid, you know, prime farmland, wanting to avoid, you know, historic and cultural resources and certainly as well, the, the flood plain areas and, and wetlands areas. So you kind of see just a, a visual representation of, of what that looks like for them and just some of the considerations. And similarly, same project, a little bit zoomed in a little more in terms of the, you can see the, the green areas are the, excuse me, the green areas, the ag and forestal districts, the green outlined areas. But then in, in kind of that light blue is the, the project area. And so this kind of gives you a, a closer perspective of the, the flood plain coming into the, and also the topography on, on the site as well. This one, in this case, obviously doesn't touch as much in terms of prime farmland, just again, but that I think also potentially raises some of those issues of the, the type of soils that are in place there and potentially if it's. potentially if it got to a site plan or if it got to a development phase, the impacts on clearing some of that land, what that would take. So I do want to bring just, just to your attention, again, if you haven't seen it in, in 2018, 2019, I know a couple of, a couple of you, I want to say Mr. Hutchison, maybe Mr. Yancey as well, we're at, we had a solar workshop back in early April of 2018, just kind of outlining some of the initial, what people were seeing and just trying to give some initial thoughts to it. One of the things that came out of that was, was our GIS staff here completed a, a solar analysis really with the purpose of identifying areas in the region that, that would likely be of interest and likely meet some of the the known kind of factors that, that would lead to interest in solar development activity. And so you can see the factors there, it's floodplains, wetlands, the protected areas in terms of historic resources, steep slopes, and then the proximity, not only to the transmission lines, but also substations and then prime ag lands. And so what that analysis did, if you look at the 1965 square miles of the Rappinac Rapidan region, once you exclude out all of those areas based on those factors there, leaves about 120 square miles in the region that, that sort of meet those criteria. Certainly other criteria could be incorporated that would either further reduce that or potentially expand that, that amount. But you know, so about, you know, less than 10% of the, the region. In Orange County, it's about 45 and a half square miles, you know, again, met those, met the areas that weren't excluded, and that's about 13.3 of the total area in Orange County. And so you see the map here and what you can kind of, kind of the gray areas that show up are the ones that, you know, would, would kind of meet that criteria. And so the project in Culpeper County is sort of right in that gray area along the, the transmission lines and near the substations. We've seen some of that activity up in, in Vacu County as well. But it does, you know, areas throughout the, the region that, that may be, you know, most likely to, to, you know, see some of this activity. Certainly does not mean that other areas would not be of interest to, for this type of development, but this was, was one technique that we used to to sort of identify those areas that likely would see the, the applications come in. And then I've just listed a couple of additional resources here. Again, the, the workshop presentations from our workshop in 2018, there was a, a similar workshop over in the valley in 2019 with some of the same presenters and, but also some, some other ones. I want to thank Josh for pointing me to a, a APA Virginia webinar that was held back in October. Held the Berkeley Group presented on, had a lot of good information about this, this type of stuff, and actually would be something I would point you to, just to, to expand on a lot of what I kind of hit the high points on here. They kind of got into a little more detail. It's about an hour long. Two other things, one is a Southwest Virginia solar playbook, and, and I kind of couched that with it certainly is something that, you know, was, was not only, didn't, also had local government involvement or, or kind of state government involvement in terms of putting together, but, but certainly had solar industry involvement in putting that playbook together. But I bring it up just because it had a kind of a good outline of here's some of the, the, you know, ways that this happens and the development process goes on. Again, just from a different perspective than, than we might often see. And then finally, the, the kind of the last point I want to make is just the, I've talked about Department of Environmental Quality, a little bit about Department of Conservation and Recreation at the state level, but the Virginia Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy is, is really, I think, taking on a role as, as the state kind of champion of, of solar. They've, they've kind of, you know, worked with the industry. I think they've become certainly done some projects in Southwest Virginia where they have a, a larger presence, but they've developed what they call a sole tax tool, and that's a comparative tool, which allows you to compare the machinery and tools, tax revenues versus the real estate tax revenue. So if you remember the, the slide on the 2020 General Assembly changes, they talked about, you know, granting that, that real estate tax or, you know, being able to take up to $1,400 for each megawatt of a project. This is a tool that would allow you to compare that and just sort of do some of the revenue modeling for, for each jurisdiction. They also have teased, just this past week, they had a, the Virginia Solar Summit for 2021, and so they've, they've indicated they're going to be statewide solar survey focused on locality needs and, and issues that localities are running into. So as we see that, I'm sure, you know, your, your staff at the, the planning services and department and certainly county administration and board supervisors will see that, but I think that's something where as you, as you identify those issues and continue to, to figure out the path forward, I think this is something that would benefit from, from some honest discussion back to, to the state as well about some of the impacts that we're seeing locally. So. And this, I appreciate, again, appreciate the time. Tried to move through those, you know, fairly quickly, but I'm, I'm happy to take questions, or if you've got, you know, other ideas and other thoughts that you all have dealt with, as, as since you've had some of these projects come through, I'm, I'm happy to continue the discussion here.
Patrick, we thank you. Is there any commissioner that has a brief question? We don't want to label this, but we're just sort of, I don't want to cut the question off.
Patrick, this is George Yancey. The presentation up at Opel that day was excellent, and I congratulate you for putting that together. My question is in this presentation here tonight, there was no mention about the battery aspect of solar. Can you comment on that? And is that a special DEQ concern, or should that be a concern of the locality?
I would, I would say that, you know, I don't, I wouldn't classify it as a DEQ concern, and if I were advising local government or locality, I would say that anything that, that might be a concern for the locality concern itself with, you should do so. So I think battery is something, I'm looking at the Culpeper County, you know, and it talks about, you know, battery storage systems and facilities. And I do think that's something to, to be concerned with as you move through an, an application process as they come in. Yeah, don't, don't leave, I, I, my advice would be not to leave any concern to, to the state to, to figure out for you. Take that, take that opportunity yourself.
Thank you.
Patrick, are there any standards for decommissioning as far as bringing the land back to its original status, which I'm not sure is possible?
I, I think your, your hunch is correct. I, the, the issue that I see is that what we hear is that, yes, we can put it back to whatever that, you know, whatever the use was before all this happened. I don't think we've seen that, you know, in practice anywhere that you can say, okay, yes, it was returned to an agricultural use, or what was the use before? There are a couple of documents, I mean, I think that's, that's the main thing that most localities, I know that, that not only Culpeper, but Augusta County has been one that, that's taken a, a strong tact on that as well. What I would say is as much as you can do in terms of the, the surety bond, but I, I, I wouldn't go in assuming that, you know, if you have a, a working farm that in 30, 35, 40 years, they'll take the solar panels off and it, it can go back to that immediately. I mean, potentially in the future. I, in terms of standards, there's one document, I didn't link it here, but I'll, I'll forward the link over to, to Josh and Sandra that has a pretty, it's actually put together by, I think, Sole UNESCO, but it's a, a pretty thorough listing of guidance or policies that were put in place through the permitting process at, at various counties in Virginia, which I think is a good reference, just in terms of, okay, what are some people doing that, that we may not have thought of? Because that's one thing that as, as these projects continue to come in, the, the information continues to evolve and the, the techniques to, to address some of those.
Okay, yeah, appreciated. If that can get forwarded to to our folks, it would be very useful.
Any other commissioner?
This will be a real quick one. Patrick, the slides that you presented, are they available online somewhere?
They're not online, but again, Josh and Sandra have them in their possession, so they can certainly share them with you.
Are, are we able to, if, if, so I assume they'll share them with us? Are we able to share them outside of the, the group here? I mean, if I have constituents or someone I'd like to show them to, is that okay?
I, I don't have a problem with that. I would assume that they're part of a public meeting, so they would, they would be available anyways, so.
Yeah, yep.
All the links also available through that presentation?
Yeah, if there's a, the, kind of the blue highlighted links, yeah, those applicable and, and, you know, again, provided as long as somebody on, on the other end doesn't change a link, but they should, they were active as of this morning, so.
For the other commissioners, the last point Patrick made about, you know, can the land be restored to its original state? I encourage you to do some research on Southampton County and the results they had on a 1,200-acre project. And you will find out his point that he elaborated to. Restoration is almost impossible completely. Okay, Patrick, we thank you so much. I'm, I'm sure that Josh will be in touch with you to get those links and until we can do better, we thank you with greatness in our heart. You have informed us a lot. It's a, it's something we needed, and you provided it in a well condensed, compact form. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much again. Appreciate it.
Good luck, Patrick.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, what, could I ask Mr. Yancey a question? What, why was it not reclaimable? Was it because all the topsoil was removed before the installation?
Topsoil was removed, all the timber was harvested. All the topsoil was actually sold or moved off-site, so therefore it could not be bought back to restore. The county, after a year, got a little skittish, I think is the right word, and had an outside consultant come in and do an evaluation. If my memory from the presentation, you correct me, Mr. Hutchison, Mrs. Ring said that out of the 1,200 acres, a potential of 200 acres would could be restorable of that, less than 50 acres would ever be tillable. The rest of it was wasteland.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's interesting. Yeah, I would not be in favor of moving topsoil. But you know, mines do that all the time, and they're, they claim to be able to reclaim land.
Well, I mean, but all you gotta do is take a look at what, what's in the wildlife and what the impact is.
Jim, I'm totally with you, man. I'm totally with you.
As much rain, as much rain as we've been getting, the stormwater.
All right, gentlemen, let's close this one down so we can move on a little bit. I hate to close it out, but we'll, we'll keep going if I don't bring us in a little bit here. We had a good presentation. I am, I'm going to ask that staff follow up with those things that we want and make sure we have accessibility to those links. And I'm going to ask the commission, is it, is it too far in advance to ask staff to start with maybe some type of solar conditioning and application and a process, something a little more detailed we have for us in the future?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I don't think it is, and I, I mean, in particular, those areas where revenue can be, you know, gotten for the county. I mean, those are definitely things that, that I think we should be thinking about. And to Mr. Yancey's point, I definitely have a long history of being against removing topsoil because I've always felt that that was not really reclaimable. So yeah, I think there's a number of things that we would want to go ahead and start getting on paper.
Okay.
Yeah, just to highlight an email that, that we sent out to, to to everyone concerning the Berkeley Group presentation that we've requested Josh to take a look at bringing the Berkeley Group in to take a look at our whole program, the comp plan, our regulations, everything to make sure that we have our bases covered, because I don't think that we do. And I'm, I'm also confident that we haven't seen the last of developer requests for solar farms.
Yeah, I think the office has already started on that process and project. He, he may report on some things tonight for you to let you know what's going on. He may wait until he has more information.
They may be able to assist our staff in doing some of the conditions and stuff.
Hey, Hutch, are you talking just as it relates to solar, or are you talking full-scale look?
No, no, I'm talking just solar right now. I mean, the full-scale look is that's beyond me right now, but just taking a look at solar, they did such a fine presentation. I can't remember everything that they laid out, but what was covered to protect our land and our, our county from the solar farm development, making sure that we're not caught between a rock and a hard stone, including all the new legislative changes that are going on to make sure that we're safe in doing what we're doing if we do anything on solar farms.
Hey, Hutch, I, I, and Mr. Chairman, I completely agree with you. You know, that would be great to do. I, I'd like to remind the commission that the last time we had Berkeley Group in to look at our comp plan was related to that sequestration. And they provided comments, but for whatever reason, we were never allowed to see them, except for the chairman and the vice chairman. And we never allowed the public to see them. And so I would advocate that we not do that again on this. I mean, if we're going to do this, like, I, I don't feel like if members of the board perhaps aren't happy with the recommendations that, that we don't get to see them. So that would be my only comment on that.
As far as I'm concerned, if they're dealing with our comp plan, our regs and, and all the other stuff associated, that's total transparency because it's public.
Well, no, it's not. We went through this before, Hutch, with this exact same group, the Berkeley Group. And so we got to a situation, if you remember, where we didn't get to see the recommendations. And neither did the public.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here then, so.
You, you were. Yeah, remember, and I'm not trying to argue with you, Hutch.
For the GWAP.
Do, do you remember when we had the presentation on the, the timber?
The Healthy Watersheds Project.
The Healthy Watersheds Project.
Now I know what you're talking about.
That was the Berkeley Group and they did a fine job, but you know, at the end of the day, I don't know what they presented. I assume someone didn't like it. And they clamped down and only presented it to the chairman and vice chairman. I was the vice chairman at the time. And while we committed to the public that we would do a number of things, we backed out on that. So I'm fully supportive of this, Hutch, but I would really like the commission to to get on board with us being actually transparent with this.
Sounds like a job for Josh.
All right, point's well taken. We, we, we're going to close out on this. I think Josh understands what we want. He's listening and Sandra's listening and Tracy's listening. So between the three, they ought to be able get their understanding what we want. If not, they can call the commissioners and ask what they're after there. Mr. Johnson, you still on board? Okay, Planning Services report, Mrs. Thornton.
I think the only thing that I would mention, and, and Josh may want to add something to this, we did yesterday receive the Wilderness Crossing Releasing Application. So work will be beginning on that review process.
Well, what I was going to ask you both on that process, we have a subcommittee kind of with the GWAP, that's Mr. Yancey and Mr. Hutchison. I would ask, as you get through your final stages, kind of walk them through what you're thinking before you push it out to the full commission, not saying that the full commission shouldn't get everything, but they were attending the GWAP meetings. It's right in that area. They are the committee that we've established. Let's kind of let them look at it and, and understand, and then we'll get the full commission to look at it and go there. And I know as our calendar goes, we, we, this is a very, very large project. I see a lot of concept pictures and what's going on, and it's, it's a costly project, just the application fee alone was a costly thing, so they're serious. So we, I want to make sure we're, we're, we're in line with it, if you don't mind, please. So I want to make sure we're in line with it, if you don't mind, please.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Galles, we go.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I want to say thank you for the warm welcome over the last nine days in which I have been a member of the administration for Orange County and leading the Department of Planning and Development Services. I've had an opportunity to meet with most of the commissioners at this point, one-to-one, and have heard a lot of, a lot from you about your priorities for the county, for your districts, and I look forward to continuing those conversations. We've had a good discussion tonight on general considerations related to special uses on items related to the conditions that may be relevant to a large public policy item, and of course, as Sandra has just related, probably one of the largest zoning cases that has ever come to Orange County, and I can't quantify that frankly, because I I'm just beginning to get some of the details on that case, but we will be digging into all those items. And I would, as I said before I joined the staff on March 4th, when I came to your meeting as a visitor, I'll let you know, my phone is always ready for you. My email is ready for you. I want to hear from you, and I'm looking forward to the two meetings per month that Chairman Brooks described, where we can focus on the second meeting and talk about some of these issues in a format very much like tonight. Try to keep some of your regular business out of those meetings and get to some of your educational informational sessions where we can, you know, really think with some perspective about those items that are not case or site-specific. That's pretty much all I wanted to share at this meeting. Any questions tonight, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, like I said, it's an open phone line. I'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard, and we appreciate your hospitable moments with us.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question or comment on, it's either Josh or Sandra, just sort of a point of reference. So Signature Station reached out to me and asked for a one-on-one meeting, which I'm always happy to do with whoever, and I've done a number of them. But they had mentioned an addendum that had been submitted. And so I think when I told him that, you know, I don't have that yet, and I'm not, you know, it's fine, I told him that we usually do that a week in advance of the meeting. I think his expectation was maybe that had been sent out to everyone. So just wanted to make you aware of that. I asked him if he was looking to talk with me about the addendum that they submitted, that he would need to send that to me ahead of the meeting. Otherwise, I'm not going to know what to say about it. But just giving you a heads up and letting you know that that's going on on that particular project.
Jason, just for edification, that Legal Notice did post in the Orange Review, I believe, today.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we had touched on at your last meeting that we were, you know, expecting that to be on your April 1st agenda.
Right, yeah, yeah, I was aware of that, but, you know, just, I don't know if he'll be contacting you or not, but clearly he thought that that had been sent to us, you know, the addendum, and I'm not saying it should have. I'm just letting you know that you might be getting a call, you know, reference that. And that I did ask him for it, if he wanted to discuss it on this one-on-one meeting he had asked for.
Okay, thank you for that heads up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just say, thank you. I would just say, I I am excited and thrilled to be here and to join this team, and we have some really good communication efforts across the administration to, I think, really enhance the way the website is used and allow easier flow of information. You know, the tools are there. Orange County's been doing it. It's not anything new. I think it's just an enhancement of some of the tools that are there. And to Mr. Capell's point about addenda and other information as they come in, it's certainly my goal, again, things don't change in a week or a month, but it is my goal to try to get information to the public as quickly as we can. Sandra and Tracy have been doing a fantastic job getting the information out, but the more we can use our publication systems, including the website, the easier it is for everybody just to be up to speed and on the same page.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioner comments?
Just one comment. I'm really looking forward to the meetings that we're going to have. I like the idea, Chairman Brooks, of the, you know, kind of the business on the front end of the month and the the educational stuff in the backend. So I'm looking forward to that.
And just to follow up on that comment, I talked with Josh today, and he likes the calendar. He kind of likes what we've established. He may put a little torque in it here and there, but he does like it, and I think it'll work out for us, and it helps staff to be able to tell the applicants, this is the process we typically follow. And I strongly suggested to him, if he knew of any policies we need to put in place, bring them before so we can make them policies and get things done in an orderly fashion. It would help us greatly. All right, the next meeting date is April 1, which is we call that April Fool's Day. We won't be, that's our next meeting date. If anybody does not have anything, I solicit a meeting, solicit a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Go move.
Move District 5, District 1, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.